Good afternoon, everybody. We'll bring the committee of the whole meeting to order for October the fifteenth, two thousand and twenty-four. Welcome, everybody who's come to today's meeting. I'd like to acknowledge that we are meeting in the heart of the traditional territory of the Dene, the Cree, and the Dunneza people of Fort Nelson and Prophet River First Nations. We further recognize the rights provided by our treaty, and we celebrate the contributions and enduring presence of the Maiti people in our region. Please be advised this afternoon's meeting is available to the public to attend virtually and is being streamed and recorded. Originally, we had a delegation from the community foundation. They backed out on Friday, so we'll pretty much be dealing with the ready program today and and then the other discussion. Is there any new business? Okay, well, that, is there any public that wishes to comment? Okay, everybody's okay with the agenda the way it is, then we will move directly to the committee of hold report number fourteen twenty-four, which is proposed updates to the ready program. Staff, please. Welcome, Ms. Penny. Claudia, yours.
Good evening, Mayor Fraser and council members. For those that might be online, my name is Diana Penny, Regional Health Liaison with the NRM. Report fourteen is presented to you tonight with some proposed ready program updates. Over the past year, interactions with program participants and evolving benefits from our other partners have highlighted opportunities for potential adjustments to the program. Tonight, guidance is being sought to ensure the updates to the ready program are consistent with regional council goals and objectives related to the recruitment and retention of healthcare professionals in the NRM. I'm not sure how you'd like to address these items, if you want them read one by one, or if you've already read them and you might have comments, or how?
I've read them, but of course, I'm not as familiar with this program as you are, and certainly you are. I think I'd like to just see us, we have a little bit of time.
Okay.
Address each bullet, and I mean, I'm sure there's more to each of these bullets than what you could put in writing.
Yeah.
So if you'd like to maybe explain a little each of them, and then we can determine if we're comfortable or hear any comments that any council have.
For sure.
Okay.
So the first potential update is around nurses. So nursing incentives went from ten thousand to thirty thousand, and that's in place until March, two thousand and twenty-five. So just wondering, I think it was brought up by Councilor Gerwing to maybe look at that and see if we wanted to change the amount of the financial incentive for around nursing.
Have you got a comment?
Uh, yeah, we had a conversation, and I think we had a, I think it was at a meeting, but for sure, I don't, I can't remember. It doesn't matter. So I just thought that, given that the nurses have all of these additional incentives, is the small portion that we give really an incentive? And that's a question mark. Or would it be better used to take, I don't want to decrease the budget, but to take that allotment and funnel it down into either having more positions funded or a larger portion of money given as an incentive to other categories?
So my question on that would be, if the increase of ten thousand to thirty thousand is available to nurses, is that just for us? Is that for all Northeast? Because I think considering, I get where you're coming from, is if you got thirty thousand, do you need another two or whatever it is? But what differentiates us from any of the other communities, I guess, that where they might get to thirty thousand? Is there?
We would still do the housing, which is different.
Which is different.
And we would still do the welcome package, which is different.
Okay. Well, my preference would be to move it someplace else than to further enhance the rest of the, that would be my preference. Anybody else? But.
The only thing to keep in mind is that as of right now, it could expire in March, two thousand and twenty-five.
If we move it, we don't lose it, right? It's still there. It's still there. We're just, for the next year or two years, we end up using it for a different part of the ready program. My thoughts. Counselor Opper.
Um, just a quick question. Are we seeing retention of nurses right now, like these hospital emergency department closures? Is that related to nursing? What is happening there?
It is related to registered nurse, nursing.
So if, if let's say Fort St. John is offering the thirty thousand incentive as well, um, would that not give us a leg up for the nurses that we seem to be lacking in, that seem to be responsible for these uh, emergency department closures? I'm not saying one way or the other, but it's a consideration that that extra incentive uh, it might seem like not as much as Northern Health is offering, but it might be that little little bump that, uh, you know, gets them to notice our area above, uh, others that are also offering that incentive.
Counselor Gerwing?
Yep, I'd just like to add that, um, Northern Health has stated that their recruiters do not inform possible nursing candidates of our incentive package because they don't want to be perceived as playing favorites among communities. So John, as to the best of my knowledge, they don't even know about it till they get here and Diana contacts them and.
But the difference with our program is the housing that they might not provide in Fort St. John for nurses. So that does differentiate us and, and, and you know, two thousand dollars is two thousand dollars. But I, I think if my thought would be to move that two thousand dollars or whatever the budget for nurses premium would be into the other part of the, because I think we'll get to a question where there is other allied service workers that we might be trying to attract. Correct?
Correct. So, um, just I'm not sure if any of you printed off the program itself, but in year one, an RN would get three thousand. In year two, they'd get forty-five hundred. So keeping that in mind, if you move it, an LPN gets three thousand, but she still also gets the thirty thousand to add more.
Yeah.
And all nursing positions remain difficult to fill. And that's still the, it's further down, but the professions of focus are ones that there was an added benefit or a kind of an uplift in the incentives were provided for those difficult to fill positions. So nursing remains among those um, where we've been successful in fully staffing up some of those other positions, the allied health positions, for example, that in past were really difficult to recruit to.
Yes, please.
Can you just remind me, um, how many nurses, not like, not LPNs, but registered nurses that we have, that have taken advantage of the ready program? I don't remember.
Two?
Not many.
Not many.
Not many. No, three, I believe. Sorry, three, I believe. Yeah. Thanks.
Okay, I guess I'm, I don't know if I'm consensus or not, but I sure would like. Yeah, we're not making a decision because what, yeah, so I guess but they are looking for direction with respect to changing the ready program. They'll go away and change it and come back where we have another opportunity to discuss it. But let's make the change and see what it looks like. Counselor Anders?
So I must have misread this because I, I thought it doesn't really matter. So we're looking at taking away the two thousand dollar incentive because Northern Health is offering a bigger incentive already. We've set this up to try to edge ourselves against everybody else. That was the whole purpose of it. Just because somebody else is offering an incentive also, I don't think we should be changing our structure. I think we should be still trying to edge everybody out with our incentive program instead of re-funneling it down. Nurses are people that we really need as well, right? And we had it set up, like if we're going to restructure, that's a different, I guess, that's a different conversation. So.
Go ahead.
If, if they're, oh, sorry.
Thirty-first, please, yeah. You haven't had a crack yet.
That's fine. I just, I have a question too around that. Counselor Gerwing, you mentioned the that a potential nurse for the area talking to Northern Health won't be notified of our incentive program at all. Typically, at all. So see, that's, that's an area that in order to capitalize on keeping it, we would have to figure out how to get the message to prospective nurses right away, because even our housing is invisible, isn't it?
Yeah.
So all of it's invisible. So that's the thing. So in a way, we're not really comparing apples to apples. We've got, we've got, uh, Northern Health are bringing a thirty thousand pot to the table for everyone to look at. And we're bringing housing and maybe a little bump up on the whatever Northern Health is, but if that part's invisible, we have to figure that out before we really figure out whether or not to keep it or to send it away. Like, we don't have all the information we need.
Um, yeah, so we just draw council's attention to it's thirty thousand from Northern Health, but then there's also the facility bargaining, bargaining association and the community bargaining association that gives two thousand dollars quarterly up to a eight thousand dollar max per year. And I just want to make sure that anybody listening is understanding my point, that I don't think that I don't want to give incentives to nurses. I don't want to be, you know, the dartboard at the coffee room tomorrow in the hospital. That's not what I'm trying to do here. Um, but if, and I just want to say too, that if there are local recruitment activities, then it's very much shared then. It's just if the professional recruiter out of Northern Health who's recruiting for the whole area, they have informed us that they don't share that. But let's just say the the hospital administrator is doing some recruiting on her own, then I think that that would play into it. So, yeah.
Counselor Opper.
Just one more point. Um, you know, I think the incentive, all of the incentives for the program, um, help us in our messaging. And when, you know, just because Northern Health, uh, isn't, uh, willing or able to, you know, um, communicate our incentive in our messaging, we can communicate their incentive and our incentives. So I see a benefit of keeping that incentive with the nursing. If there was a compelling reason to reallocate those funds to better, um, serve the program, I would absolutely be in favor of that. But right now I see the, the, the main issue we have with these closures is nurses. So I think we should be keeping our resources directed to, to those positions, uh, as well as the other ones. But I'm, I'm also open to reallocating as well, so.
I just, um, had a thought too. I'll share with counsel for your perspectives on it. What about if we didn't give it the first year because they get thirty thousand dollars and then it may be eight thousand, if that's read properly, I'm not exactly sure, but I think the way I'm reading it could be thirty-eight thousand dollars a year. What if we gave it as an incentive to stay another year? So instead of happening year one, we, it'll happen year two and year three. So right now we do, we do year one and two, so they come here, they find out about it, and then we will have that incentive for year two and year three is just a thought. I don't.
I see a lot of heads shaken. So if we can bring point one back to say that. Good job.
Thank you. Next point is incentive allocation limits. So throughout the ready program, um, for each position, it will say how many awards per year. So like RNs two per year, LPNs two per year. The ask is could we remove the up to and just allocate? Allocate? Provide as long as we're within the budget. If that makes sense, like if we're looking for RNs, the ready program only allows you to do two per year, but we're already short, say, three or four. But I can only do two unless I come back and ask, right?
So if you're really successful and you get three candidates on the hook, the up to sort of limits you.
It limits.
Counselor Gerwing?
Can I bring a historical perspective to that? So when we were, um, designing it, we said up to because we wanted to ensure that all, because we were short in all categories, and we wanted to ensure that all care, like that all of them budget wouldn't be used in for nurses, and then we'd have nothing for the rest of the year. So that's why we put that limit in, and then there's a place in there that says anything outside of that comes to council. And so then this is all automatically done at staff, right? But if there's something outside the parameters of this plan, then that's to come back to council. So if there were, you know, if it says up to two LPNs, but we had an opportunity to have four, that would come back to council, and we would make that decision whether we wanted to frontload that or not.
So, so then is, is the wording up to limiting to you, or is, is the, is the process of coming to council at issue, or?
No problem in coming to council, no.
And I think we've already added money, and I think we've, we've supported the program when, when staff have come forward looking for a change or so I think we're good with it.
Okay. Next bullet is profession of focus. And we're look suggesting maybe updating the list based on a more present reflection of vacancies across the local health sector, or remove the thirty percent professional focus premium altogether. This was to incentivize those hard to fill positions.
So have you got an idea of what the updated list would look like?
Well, it changes.
It changes basically.
It changes on a regular basis, so I guess.
You're a fountain of certainty.
I don't know if we want to put it in there discretion of admin based on current need as needs arise.
Go ahead.
Diana, where is that wording, um, thirty percent?
So it's under, um, financial incentives, so page six, and it's the very last. Oh, sorry. In your package, under financial incentives.
What's that that's available?
Page eleven.
In the program attack, yeah.
Oh, yeah.
So yours is on page seven, very last bullet.
You're wrong, listen.
But this speaks to that there's a thirty percent premium awarded to an eligible applicant in the category. And then there's actually a definition of what the professions of focus are within, it's on page two of the ready program. So we know, like, so all of the medical lab technologists and medical lab assistant physicians, right now, they would if there was to be another one hired, which there likely wouldn't be because all of the positions are filled, they would be eligible for a thirty percent premium to the incentives. Whereas there are some there that remain hard to fill. So maybe it's instead of, instead of speaking to each position individually, maybe it's something that's, um, in working with the employer to determine those positions that have been vacant for an extended period of time or something like that. Because as Diana said, that changes frequently.
So I'm, you go ahead.
Yeah, I, I kind of like that idea. I could see that working if we could tie the profession of focus um, descrip, or yeah, I guess description to, to include the vacant, you know, where that would be the need, right? We're going to focus on
vacant.
Vacant positions. And like, I think that would be a good way to alleviate it.
Yeah, so I agree with that too, and I, but I'm, I'm just trying to understand the thirty percent, why you would eliminate the thirty percent wording. Isn't that what, isn't that what you're asking to say, or remove the thirty percent profession of focus premium?
I don't think that was the end.
No, that was, it wasn't, sorry. Yeah, it's not the intent to remove it. It was the intent to deep outline. Allow it to fluctuate, I guess, as positions fluctuate, or eliminate it altogether because it's just confusing with the list that we currently have.
So, so essentially maintain a position of focus, or profession of focus, sorry, but not necessarily bookend with list of names that be based on the definition that's already in here in terms of what that, right, who would receive it? And it would be based, because it's, it could be a moving target, right?
With an accent on vacant, on vacancy.
Yeah, yeah. Okay, because it outlines in terms of the need, if, if there was a vacancy that puts additional strain or could remove a service to the community, and also it outlines in terms of what a lengthy vacancy would be like too, because they could something on ninety days, I think it's in that too, right? But you're suggesting us to get rid of the actual list, not get rid of the incentive.
Okay. Go ahead.
The description, I think, doesn't need to be fixed. You're, I think that list needs to be just scrapped because the description reads quite well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. You got direction to change that, bring it back? Okay.
Thank you. And then it also mentions, um, critical positions. So I'm just looking, um, can we update that list based on input from Northern Health to identify the gaps current and future?
So I'm okay with that if we're informed.
Okay.
So basically, if you're working with, you know, Northern Health locally to to, um, to modify the list based on the vacancies that we just talked about, that if you change them, you just inform us that they've been changed.
Okay. Thank you.
That's, that's my take on that. Yeah, I see agreement around the table. Okay?
So the next item up is scholarships.
And maybe you'll just, next, come to us the quarterly update that you give us, right?
Okay.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Okay, the next item is scholarships. Um, it was brought up about considering increasing the value in consideration of current post-secondary education costs. So while it is already a generous scholarship, just wondering if it, if its intent is to grow our own, or is it a generous donation? The difference with growing your own would be that two thousand dollars probably wouldn't pay your first year tuition. So but it can stay as a scholarship, just leaving it up for discussion.
I'm looking to the folks who who were in on this at the start, you know, what was the intention originally? You know, with the scholarship?
The scholarship was already in practice.
Oh, it's been there for a long time.
Yeah, it's been there for a long time. I don't, I don't remember the last time that it was increased. I don't, in my
Never?
Ten years, I don't think it's ever been increased. So ten years ago, we were giving, what is it, fifteen hundred?
Two thousand.
Two thousand. And so ten years later, we're still giving two thousand dollars. Um, yeah, but that was separate from, but when we developed this program, then we brought it all together. Yeah.
So my question was, was the two thousand, was the limit at that time based on something? Was it like the first year's tuition, or it was a ballpark? Sort of, we grabbed it from the air? So you're asking us to grab it from the air again? Or, or or is there something like, is the, you know, can we do a comparison with respect to the price increase of, of education since two thousand, or pardon me, since this was set and what it is now?
For sure.
So it makes sense to me that if, if the costs have gone up fifteen percent, we should look at fifteen percent increase or?
I can bring that back.
So you can bring that back to us?
Yep.
Okay, thank you.
I think it's the, the other thing is just the intent behind the award, right? So to Diana's point, if it's to attract people to health professions, um, by making it more financially accessible for local graduates to become nurses or physicians or technologists, is a two thousand dollar scholarship going to say, I really want to be that nurse? Or is it just among the other, um, you know, academic awards that are available, we just want to be competitive in that kind of arena? It's just, yeah, it's to have counsel to think about the intent behind those awards.
Counselor Gerwing, please.
Yeah, and I think that if we are thinking about increasing it, especially if we're thinking about increasing it substantially, we should, um, tie it more directly to like the successful completion of one semester or something, because you know, like we're all human, so we all think we're gonna go to university and become a doctor, and you've done your first month, you go, yeah, that's not for me. I'm switching to social sciences or whatever it happens to be, right? So just to be aware of that, if we're going to change it, I think we need to change the requirements as well.
To just follow that point just a little bit farther, since this has been around for a very long time, has it attached to any person? Has this attached to people that have gone forward? It has?
And have come back to work.
And have come back to work. See, that's, that's the measure.
Yeah. Okay. So I'm hearing we're, we're agreeing that we want to see an increase. Give us some justification of what the increase looks like. And I think we can have a further discussion about the success of this and, and, uh, you know, how we want to tie it to growing your own. You know, or do, are we, you know, if we need registered nurses, I, you know, because essentially you pay their way all the way through school and look for a return for service, and now you've got registered nurses. So think about that. So when this comes back, we can decide. Okay? Okay.
The next item is municipal utility costs for NRM housing. So confirm whether municipal utilities are to become the costs of the physicians in year two and three of the housing incentive and update the ready accordingly. So first, you're going through this program, and all of a sudden we get a thing comes across my desk for water and sewer to be paid for by the physicians, and I was like, oh, was that the intent? So it doesn't say, it says utilities, which we know is for this hydro, internet, if they decide to keep the internet that's being provided, but I'm just wondering on direction of water and sewer, is that the intent to be on the physicians?
So remind me what we're paying for now?
Sorry, say that one more time.
Remind me what we're paying for now?
So they're paying their house, or you're covering their housing costs, and they have to pay their utilities in year two.
In year two, so in year one, we're paying all the utilities?
Year one, we're paying everything. House and all utilities.
Sewer, gas, hydro.
And internet if they. Correct.
Have we had any complaints from the, from them? The ones who are paying in year two and three?
Nope. Not thus far.
For utility?
I've always assumed that water and sewer are utilities.
Yeah.
I would, I would have that in the definition if we needed.
Sure, but I'm, I'm sensing that it's not just water and sewer in year two and three. It's all of them.
It's all of it, yeah.
It's all of it in year two and three.
But yeah, you were, you were looking for clarification.
On water and sewer.
If we felt that water and sewer was a utility.
Oh, yeah, for sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, if it's not included in year one, I think it should be.
Okay.
So what did you still say? And then in year two?
If it's not included in year one, it should be.
The water and sewer.
The water and sewer.
Year one or year?
The other, we're already paying for all the rest of the utilities in year one.
Yeah.
The question was about water and sewer in year one.
In year.
And we're saying, yeah, I think we're seeing, oh, in year two, so the year two is different. Year two is different then.
And year two, they pay the, the occupant pay for all the utilities. We're just wondering if utilities is intended to include water and sewer. So right now we transfer the utility bills into the occupant's name, or we, we get a reimbursement if it's better that we maintain them. But we just, there was an uncertainty in terms of how to deal with the water sewer costs.
I think it's a utility, so it should be paid. Yep.
After paying the utilities in year two, then that includes the water and sewer. Okay. Okay.
Okay. Just because I think, sorry, um, so year one, we pay all the utilities? Year two, we transfer all the utilities over for us whatnot. Just want to make sure that we transfer over to the, to the physician's name.
Yeah.
We transfer, so year two and three, we would transfer over the water and sewer to the physician's name right now. As you said, included in year two and three, so I just want to make sure.
Clarify, yes.
Yeah, we're good. We got it.
Okay.
Either way, whichever way it goes, they're included as a utility. I think it's easy way, right?
Yeah, yeah. And they're informed of that, right? So they know that in year two and three, they're going to get the utility bills.
They do now. They will now, yes. Okay.
It's not the first time we've gone from year one to year two, so it's happened already.
No, this is the first time. That's why I just, under this program.
Okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
About that, like, is it, um, would it be better for us just to?
About that, like, is it, um, would it be better for us just to pay it and bill them back? Like, it seems like it's to transfer utilities over into somebody else's name and then have to transfer them back when they move and.
It's a case by case basis. So I mean, if the physician knows in year two that they'll be here for ten. They would. The utilities would go in their name. But if it's known that it'll be a shorter term agreement, then we may just maintain them and build them back.
Okay. The next item is housing incentives. So throughout the program, it refers to NRM housing. We're looking to replace with NRM sponsored or NRM supported housing. And so this is more so for um. Uh, say nurses or any other allied healthcare professional. That takes. That take, uses the benefits. We don't have that many houses. So it's not NRM housing. They're actually going out and finding their own housing. Or I'm helping them find housing. Um, they're paying. So it's not NRM housing, just looking to get that word changed. To NRM sponsored or NRM supported.
Really just clarifying what we're actually doing.
Okay. All right. T four As issued to recipients of incentives, including welcome packages and financial and housing benefits. Work with, so we're working with the NRM finance to ensure clear direction. Is provided regarding the T four As. That are being issued. So any. Sorry. We need to clarify it in the ready program to ensure that the recipients are aware of this. And this is particularly around housing. So any of the housing benefits are now being issued to T four A.
That's the law.
Yeah.
It's, it's, that's the law. So.
Yeah, but we need to update it.
Yeah. So let's do that.
And then property taxes is next. Confirm who bears the cost of the property tax when applicable. And update the ready program accordingly. So. We are required to send our leases to B C assessments, and we just want to be sure of the intent for property taxes.
Currently, the NRM pays the property tax.
If they're assessed. Right?
Oh, I just thought that would be an easy question, but apparently it's not. So I'll withdraw.
So if.
It's complicated.
Yeah. So if a property is you, if property is owned by the NRM and used in the provision of a service, of an NRM service, it's not taxable. Where it gets a little um. Murky is when we lease properties. So we have an obligation to provide. B C assessment with copies of all of our leases. And depending on their assessment of that lease, I shouldn't use the word, depending on their evaluation of that lease, they may assign a role. Because if they've determined that the property isn't used for municipal purpose, they can assign a role. So you'll notice in the agenda later tonight, there's a few. Um, organizations in the permissive tax exemption by law that are actually in our spaces. Um, and so the flag's been raised because there have been questions around some of our physician house leases. Um, about whether or not they be um, become part of the assessment role, which would then. We can, we have to then levy tax against them. They would get a tax notice and the tax notice goes in the occupant's name. So um. There's that very real potential, though we think there might be an administrative workaround. We just haven't fully confirmed that yet. But it was, so I guess we need confirmation from council if the intention was ever to have physicians pay property taxes. If they were to be so assessed.
What I would again give the historical perspective, I don't think it was something that we ever considered. Um, and I think that um. That we, we just wanted to give them. Free housing. So to my mind, free housing includes some property tax that may or may not be assigned.
I kind of look at, at it as if somebody's renting. The space, even though I think there, there's not really an exchange there. So like rent typically includes. Property taxes that are paid on the behalf of whoever owns the place. Right? So if we own the place or we're leasing the place, I feel that the tax burden should be on us. That's just the way I string it together. Well, whether it's legal, I don't know.
I, I think it's the administrative workaround that there's the potential, right? It's, it's, because it's kind of a policy of B C assessment, right? Because then you're levying taxes to pay our own taxes. Like, it, it's, it's, it's kind of weird, right? But. Did I, sorry, Leslie, I cut you off.
Oh, no, I was just saying, if, if we pay the taxes, does that become another benefit? To go on the T four A?
Oh, good question. Yeah.
Yeah. I, I tend to fall with Council Andrew's perspective. It's if you're the owner and you're the renter, you, you pay the tax. So that's, that's my, but if you, if you want to look at the workaround and, you know, word something in the new ready. Uh, report that you bring forward. Okay.
And then I don't have all the, the various grammatical spelling updates, but I will bring them to you.
Just change them.
I didn't want to make it that painful from Amy to Annie.
Yeah, I think just change them.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then although this is outside of the ready, of the updates to the ready program, on a related front. Consideration is being given to retain contracted support for maintenance and property management of the NRM. Supplied housings under the ready program. From a cost benefit perspective.
Yeah, so I think the analysis should come to us. What do we think it's going to cost? How much? How much is the overall contract going to be? What's the process? I get to tender it or put on RFQ or whatever. So. From my perspective, you've got to do maintenance on your property. So. You know, unless we've got somebody in house that's doing that stuff, we pretty much have to contract it out. But, but there should be a. You know, there should be a process that takes us through that to identify a contractor. Did I? And Counselor Gray?
Oh, so I understand maintenance, but what? And I, I broadly understand property management, but what were you thinking in terms of property management?
So currently sixty-six, if it's not, um, if there's nobody in it, I think the rec department currently looks in on it. Um, to run the water, and I'm guessing for insurance purposes.
Okay.
Um, there's been. An issue brought up in regards to lawn maintenance on one of our properties, and I don't think we want. That in the public. So unless I, I mean, there's only me, so unless I check the properties myself, I don't know that these are an issue until they come to mayor and council.
And it's also the, I think the um. The more homes we're providing, it's the more potential for late night phone calls of. Maintenance issues, which um, and trying to troubleshoot and find contractors. And so currently Diana handles all of that, which I mean, it's, it's important. It's also related maintaining relationships. But it takes away from some of the other project related work. So. Um, we do have, we do have preferred maintenance contractors for plumbing, electrical in general. Um, so I think that the intention would be to maintain that, but it's, it's largely that um. Yeah, the, the property maintenance, which is kind of receiving complaints and then. Working to find folks to fix them and, and whatnot. So.
Well, and, and to look after the vacant ones.
Yeah.
You know, I mean, if, if you've got all of those plumbing, heating, etc. contracts, they're not the ones that are going to check on them. They, they. They pee for service, right? Those folks? But I think if you pull it all together. And, you know, bring it to us with respect to what that might look like, that would include somebody checked in the vacant properties as well. In my. Whether that's one contractor that's able to look after it all or. Or one of them that's prepared to take that role on. You'll have to come to us with the, with what the options are.
Okay, perfect. And that is all I have.
Oh, okay.
Um, so the ready program, what an awesome program, and it's a lot of work on behalf of the NRM. And. Our partners don't seem like they're contributing. So I think. When I think about the province of B C and the Ministry of Health. And we're recruiting to grow our own. In the Fort Nelson First Nation, in the Prophet River First Nation, and the Fort Yard. Uh, nation, um. Could there be a way that when we meet with them, we talk about the ready program and the benefits and the, the attraction that we're bringing up, bringing doctors, nurses? Um, tech, technical staff? And what's their contribution? Would they like to contribute to that? Because they're already signing municipal service agreements. So could this municipal service agreement have a clause in there that emergency services also includes the ready program and it's X amount of dollars? That would be my recommendation for an agenda item for the, the next meeting with them. I bet you they don't even know about the ready program. And the work that's being done to attract professionals.
Uh, so when we began developing this program, if my memory serves me correctly, which I think it does. Um, we did reach out to various other partners and at that time they weren't interested. But that's not to say that they wouldn't be interested now. So.
Particularly if we're able to show how it's been successful. Right? And how it is improving, you know, everybody, everybody, the state of healthcare in our region.
The incentives are available for anybody. Health related that Fort Nelson First Nations or Prophet River First Nations would hire. So we did decide at that time that we wouldn't. Um, that we decided that we would blanket the area, even though the partners at that time weren't interested in financially contributing. But we didn't want to, you know, say, no, this is only if you work indirectly for Nelson.
I think, um, I think one of the things, there's been lots of changes out at the nation and even down at Prophet River, but um. You know, in the name of reconciliation. In that name, and then in the, uh, the Fort Nelson First Nation's been without a health director for several years. So. They're kind of, you know, their, their capacity is not quite there, but I think if the presentation was made and the benefit. I think you'd see some movement on it now.
Scott, you got anything to say with that? With respect to an agenda item for a?
Yeah, I think that's, I mean, that's, I think that's where it belongs. It's a good, it's a good discussion between the councils to, I mean, we could provide the information. As a staff to, about the benefits and. And the data and stats, but it's a good, it's a good, it's a good, definitely a good council, council discussion for sure.
Okay. So are we keeping a running list of? Topics? We are. Okay. So if we can add that, that'd be great. Okay. Anything else about the ready program? Did I see somebody else put up their hand? While Counselor Dickey was talking? No, no. Okay. Well, thank you for that. I know later on, you're, then the regular council agenda, there's uh, the third quarter report, I think, for the ready program. So thank you for that. Uh, if you're not here, I think uh, this is a good discussion. Thank you.
Thank you.
And we look forward to seeing uh. The changes to the ready sometime in the next couple of months or. Have you got a plan for that when you might be going in? Yep.
Later.
Sooner rather than later?
Yes.
Okay. Well, because it can potentially become part of the budget discussion, right? So, okay, good. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you.
There are no new business items? Uh, any public wishing to ask questions? No? Then we are adjourned. Until six thirty. Thank you for everybody coming to this meeting.